Time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Brockton School Committee to order. If you'd all please rise and join with me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We begin this evening's meeting with the hearing of visitors. We have three visitors that have signed in. I just want to remind those speaking that you have three minutes to speak. The school committee will take your thoughts under advisement. There will be no discourse, no back and forth, but we're happy to listen to whatever you have to say. And the first person up is Mr. Bill McGauley.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Bill McGauley, I'm the president of Brockton Youth Foundation and one of the chairs of Summerfest 2013. And I guess first, I'd like to congratulate Kathy Smith on the superintendency. You might be the first person to officially do it. This is your first meeting?
It is.
All right, good. So I really just wanted to invite all of you. We have had great support in putting together this version, 2013 Summerfest, through the mayor's office, superintendent's office, and our founders. And we've been working for about six months. And we're going to have about 60 different acts and vendors spread throughout the Brockton High School on this coming Saturday. It goes from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. We're going to -- one of the things we're using is the red cafeteria will be all food, green cafeteria will be children's activities, the blue cafeteria will be crafters. We have about eight to 10 crafters who'll be there. And then outside in the grass area between the pool and the finance building will be all the outside activities. We have soccer, softball, football, and field hockey, along with some obstacle course running and some other activities. We have setting up a stage between the green cafeteria and the finance building, and we will have performances there from 10:00 to 4:00 o'clock. If you came in the front of the building, the finance lobby, you might have seen some of the artwork that is being displayed up there. We're also having an art show, the first time, that is represented -- every school and every grade in the city, in the public schools, is represented with that art. And we're giving cash prizes to each of the first, second, and third place winners in three divisions. The divisions are K to 5, 6 to 8, and 9 to 12. So we have about 75 pieces of art. It'll be juried with three jurors on Saturday. And we're having a ceremony at 1:00 to award the recipients for first, second, and third, and best overall. And we would love to have the superintendent and the mayor join us. Bernardi Auto Group is sponsoring that particular piece of Summerfest. And they also have agreed to display all the art later in the fall at their two showrooms. So we'd like to put an event together that includes the school and the city, along with Bernardi. They've been very, very helpful along the way. Also, Eastern Bank stepped up and is our anchor sponsor this year, and they have been very, very helpful to us. We have had a lot of ground support when we revised Summerfest. If you remember, three years ago, we had about 35 or 40 total sponsors. The following year went up to about 45, and this year, we're just breaking over 70 sponsors. So it really has developed itself, and we've had a lot of people working on it. We have our last meeting, not quite a dress rehearsal, but going through everything that we need to do tomorrow night. So you're all welcome. We would love to have you. We're going to have cable there, and they will be having a couple camera crews work the events. And they will edit it and obviously rebroadcast it. Also, at 11:00 on Saturday, Dave Gorman is going to do the kids' road race. So we will have that. And then we will close the afternoon with a Caribbean steel band called The Colors. So they'll be performing at 3:00. And there's -- I forgot, it's two other things. It's free ice cream from 2:00 to 4:00. And then if some of you remember the old chocolate chip cookies that Brockton High used to make, well, we're making them for Summerfest. And we have 50 dozen ordered, and I have 18 pre-orders for the dozens. They're $12 a dozen. If you want some, let me know. I think we're going to sell out by noon time, so.
I think you will too.
They're the old-fashioned kind, the old recipe. So anybody who remembers that will probably want some. So if you want some, get your pre-orders in, because otherwise you'll have to wait in line. Thank you, and I hope to see you all on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. McGauley.
Bill, one question. A rain date, is there one?
No, there's no rain date. Thank you for asking. Last year, we have enough space. Our white cafeteria is empty, and if it is bad weather, we'll move everything in. There's no rain date. It's going on Saturday.
The forecast looks wonderful, Mr. McGauley.
No, I know. I know. Just asking.
The next person to have signed in is Ross DePina.
Somebody talking about education today, ideas of what's going on with these new policies. So, got a little written statement here. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as concerned citizens of Brockton, we are here to start a conversation on the real intentions of these new changes to Brockton Public Schools. The new state mandated policies changes to education, represented by the Common Core and the new Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers, PARCC, represents familiar and very bad nationwide policies. This effort originally started out as an attempt to drive a wedge between the teachers' union and the black community, which historically have been the strongest supporters of unions. This corporate-backed movement described as education reform is actually an effort to privatize education. Race to the Top is the newest installment in this well-funded endeavor. It seeks to implement high-stake testing to create a crisis in public education system to make way for privately managed charter schools. This is achieved by implementing a testing mentality in public schools nationwide. Then with arbitrary standards for success in place and arbitrary success in place, schools will miss these targets. They will be labeled as failing, along with teachers, their union, and students. We've seen this in Philadelphia and Chicago, where last year, 61 schools were closed and 3,000 people were fired. In Philadelphia, where 40 schools were closed and 2,000 people were fired. Unfortunately for Brockton, just as we become the next target for these changes and need strong leadership, two new leaders are not on the side of students, teachers, and the union. Kathleen Smith, the new superintendent of Brockton Public Schools, and Sharon Walder, the new principal of Brockton High School, are two enemies of public education as we know it today. Ms. Smith, a 30-year veteran of Brockton Schools, has turned her back on public education. While commenting on the new state mandated reforms, Ms. Smith describes these changes as a, quote, "perfect storm." She must be referring to the intentionally complicated PARCC standards to become common practice. In that same article, Ms. Smith utters two more curious statements. First, she says, "We've done great things with Race to the Top." This is strange, considering Race to the Top promotes high-stake testing, lowers teacher security, which are known to negatively impact teachers' union as well as the profession. Secondly, Ms. Smith claims she believes in the profession. How can that be when she openly advocates for a federal education policy that seeks to undermine the teaching profession by lowering teacher skills through an over-focus on standardized tests? Also, in that article, Ms. Smith reveals her enthusiasm for "running the school like a business," type of strategies that are features of the Race to the Top privatization plan. She expresses her desire to involve Amy Rossi, vice president of the Bernardi Auto Group, and Metro South Chamber of Commerce President, Chris Cooney. What do these people know about running a school? Nothing. They are being consulted to help implement "running the school on the cheap" strategies. This is further proof that the teachers' union is on the chopping bar. Ms. Smith's previous work history should be admired, but she has chosen to ally herself with privatizers and therefore is in opposition of teachers, their union, and students. Ms. Smith is not alone. Sharon Walder, the new principal of Brockton High School, is an enthusiastic and high-level administrative ally in the move to completely change Brockton's public schools. In her July 14 interview for the local paper, Ms. Walder explains how she plans to not only change the role of educators, but how she plans to replace teachers with computers. In one of her statements, Ms. Walder says she understands the transition will be difficult. Quote, "That's going to be a challenge because the next assessments will be online." She knows these new policies will lead to plenty of disruptions for all parties involved. Quote, "It's one thing to use technology as an instruction tool; it's another thing to actually teach students to use technology to take a test. Part of our professional development has to shift to that kind of thinking." The new state mandated professional development strategies ultimately lead to professional deterioration for teachers. As Ms. Walder explains later on in her interview, quote, "Our role as educators is changing because the kids used to come to us for information, and now they can access so much instantly online."
Mr. DePina, I have to remind you, you have three minutes. You're almost up.
Okay. I have to stop now?
You've got about one more sentence.
One more sentence?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me get some -- can I do my last paragraph then?
Okay.
If that's possible, actually. I'm going to go at the state level. On the state level, we see our Department of Education is working closely with the education departments of New York and Rhode Island. This is important because a brief look at the landscape shows what's coming for Brockton. In New York, the dominant explanation for the adoption of these new reforms is teacher accountability, which means if students do poorly, we could see teacher layoffs who are labeled failures. This was seen in the only high school in Central Falls, right in our backyard, where all the staff, 93 teachers, were fired, from the principal down to the lunch ladies to the janitors. A wound socket speech pathologist, Marie Zaminer, expresses nervousness about what kind of precedent this sets for Rhode Island and any state working with similar strategies and goals. Quote, "If they can do this here, they can do this anywhere. I'm worried it will happen where I am." And I guess that's my time.
Normally, I would not miss them in the chat.
Madam Mayor, ordinarily, we don't comment on hearing of visitors. However, I'd like to state for the record that I couldn't disagree any more than the statements that were just made. I mean, everyone has their First Amendment right to express themselves, which is fine. But I think it's a little misguided to ambush people and not have a dialogue and speak to people about their positions to clarify, because this school system fought the good fight with respect to recently an attempt for a charter school to come into Brockton. We were unified. Included in that fight was Superintendent Smith, Principal Walder, at the time Associate Principal Walder, and we were all unified with respect to fighting charter schools. We know what we have in Brockton, and we value what we have in Brockton. We came together as a community, and we sent a loud, clear message. So respectfully, I disagree with what you said. I think it's a little misguided to ambush people with such strong and, I think, somewhat misguided statements. But I would recommend that you have an opportunity to discuss these issues directly with Superintendent Smith, who's very open and would like to talk to people about any disagreement or any issues, and also Principal Walder, because I just think it's unfair to do that, and that's all I have to say.
If I had more time to speak, you'd try to think differently, but I didn't.
Principal Walder is not here this evening, but I would suggest that you give her a call. I'm going to allow the superintendent to -- as Mr. Minicello eloquently said, we don't normally do this, but I'm going to allow the superintendent to speak and respond.
Well, again, I would be very happy to speak to you at any time. You're more than welcome to come in and actually hear what some of my values are about education, my plan moving forward. And I will say, when you mention Amy Rossi or the Chamber of Commerce, I am looking forward to what I call a transition plan that involves everybody in the community, from students to teachers to parents to our business leaders that actually in this community support us in so many ways. So honestly, thank you for your dialogue this evening, but I hope, again, we can have a two-way dialogue as I go forward.
Thank you. The way that these -- actually, the way these new standards are coming in, it actually removes the teacher from the process. Though they say teachers are allowed to come up with their own curriculum, they have to work in a certain framework. So you already put them in a box, and then they can't move outside of that box. So thank you guys for the time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Just to add to this, you know, I'm off of First Amendment rights as well. It seems the only time I've ever seen this committee break from its protocol of not responding was in response to a personal attack on a couple of people. And I would have rather have seen the break from protocol under better circumstances. I just think that was -- you know, there's a million ways that these issues could have been addressed quietly and tactfully and more effectively than a three-minute speech that went to five. I'm sorry, Superintendent Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donigan. So the next individual signed up to speak is Charleston Monfort, who has signed up for the same issue. So again, I'm going to remind you that it's three minutes, and if it does get into character or individuals, then it's going to have to be discussed at a later date.
Good evening. I'd like to discuss the PARCC and the Common Core State Standards. I've actually been working closely with my colleague, Mr. DePina. The Common Core State Standards and the PARCC standardized tests are obstacles rather than aids to the teachers and students of Brockton, Mass -- Brockton and Massachusetts. The new standards outline a plan for focusing on fewer classes at a greater depth. Our main concern is that the standards will not -- excuse me, the students will not receive a complete and well-rounded education through the guidelines put in place. Common Core State Standards also outline a full curriculum but focus mainly on math and English. Our question is how will these programs ensure a complete education while putting the majority of resources towards math and English? The focus on health, physical education, music, and art will have to be reduced or eliminated as a result. And students also need to develop critical thinking skills and the ability to become lifelong learners. They should also be encouraged to think creatively and abstractly, which I believe can't be accomplished through computer programs and standardized testing. Another main concern that we have is making sure that a meaningful connection is made to each student. Replacing teachers with a series of computerized programs and standardized tests will be very detrimental to that connection. Teachers are also being treated unfairly throughout this transition. Evaluating teachers based on standardized testing is not an effective method of assessment. They're also required to take on more responsibility, learning and preparing the new students with little to no additional compensation. This includes longer school days and a longer school year as well. We feel teachers need to be more instrumental in the decision-making measures as far as education standards and deserve compensation for their work throughout. The last thing that is a concern of ours is that the implementing of these programs is an assault on public -- is an assault on public education. The effects of using standardized testing and the Common Core State Standards have been seen across the nation, from Rhode Island to New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, and Philadelphia. All have closed a large number of schools to be replaced with privately-run charter schools. Central Falls, to be specific, replaced essentially the entire school staff at one point. Rhode Island and New York use these programs, and Massachusetts is now working closely with them. Teachers need to outline how to improve the school system, not data analysis from programs. Teachers need to be more instrumental in everything that's done. And Massachusetts is working with both of those places, like I said. And I feel like both the teachers and students will suffer as a result of using these programs. And I actually also have a list of questions that we're looking for answers on. And the main question is, what's the plan going to be for class size reduction? What's the plan going to be for hiring qualified teachers? What's the plan going to be for reasonable and fair teacher evaluations? And what's the plan for maintaining and focusing on individualized attention? Those are all the points that I have at the moment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Monfort. Mr. Monfort, if you just might.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you, Mr. DePina, reach out to the superintendent's office, she'll be more than happy to sit down. She'll answer, discuss your questions with you, have a conversation about your concerns. And she can certainly do the confines about how many people and whatever. But if you reach out to the superintendent, she'll be more than happy to have a dialogue with you.
Okay.
So if you give her office a call, she'll answer all those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the hearing of visitors. Next on the agenda is the election of the secretary. Mr. Minicello.
Motion to approve Kathleen Smith as the secretary of the Brockton School Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, all in favor? Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Chair.
Mr. Donigan.
Quietly, do you think that we could take something out of order this evening?
Most certainly.
That would be for Pitt Perrin's --
Yeah, could you just make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we take one of the items, the agenda items, out of order. This is with respect to a certificate of appreciation for Roger Pitt Perrin, who's here this evening.
Any objections?
Second.
Most favorable, second and all in favor? I don't know if it was Mr. Donigan, Mr. Catherine, or Mr. Donigan.
Mr. Donigan. Shall I do it for my second?
Sure. And then you can bring Mr. Perrin up, and you can present the certificate.
It's up there.
Okay. I'll move it from the center. Now, I'll stand. So basically, I wanted to say just a few things. Whoop, thank you. My microphone. I attended an event for Mr. Perrin at Joe Angelo's Cafe a couple of weeks ago, and listening to some of the people get up and tell their stories, it occurred to me that this is a guy who has done a tremendous amount of sort of selfless, quiet work for the youth of Brockton for generations. In the midst of all the sort of horrible stories that you boxing trainers talk about, it seems like they compare tall tales in terms of how much blood is spilled. But that having been said, it was quite funny listening to you guys. One of the things that struck me is that, you know, certainly boxing is not about blood spilled. It's, having done it, it's an extremely difficult sport. It's something that Ernest Hemingway referred to as one of the only true sports. Baseball and the others that we consider sports being mere pastimes, in his opinion. But it, you know, there's one, we know in Brockton, there's one Rocky, there's one Marvin Hagler. But there are a lot of young men and women who go to boxing gyms and other types of places in Brockton who would have no other place to go. And Roger's a gentleman who's, over the years, has acquired a lot of experience, and he's quietly imparted that experience to kids in our city for generations. And it seems that we make often, we have accolades for teachers, superintendents, school committee people, public officials. We don't often stop and say, hey, this is just another regular Brockton citizen. Well, perhaps we don't often enough, and I thought it'd be nice to, if the school committee would show some appreciation to a regular citizen like Roger and just award the certificate of appreciation. So if I might, I'd like to call up here and award the certificate.
Come on up, Pitt.
On behalf of the school committee and the Brooklyn Brockton Public Schools, and I'll show the citizens of Brockton, you've been a fixture in this city for many years. You've helped a lot of our kids. You've told a lot of great stories. You're a good man, and I wanted to make sure that we appreciated that. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Pitt.
Missed you the other night.
I know, I'm sorry.
You want a picture?
All right, there you go. You got it. Yeah, there you go. Turn around, there you go.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you all for this fine meeting. Everybody associated with the school committee, this is a big honor for me. Brockton, for 50 years, has been involved in boxing, and any time I get something like this, it just overwhelms me that the people in Brockton just thought enough to do something like this for me. And I thank you all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the manner in which the school committee deals with items of routine business. I'm going to ask if there are any items that the school committee members would like removed and dealt with individually. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor? Opposed, so moved. Next item on the agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mayor Balzotti. I'd like to talk this evening, first of all, an update on the Barrett-Russell School renovations. Mr. Thomas is not here with us this evening, but my first day on the job was this past Monday, August 12th, and at 8:00 in the morning, my first order of business was to meet Mr. Minicello at the Barrett-Russell Kindergarten Center. The last time I had actually been there was on June 19th. And as much as I wanted to tell you, there was great progress at the time. I was stepping over wires, there was plumbing going on. So I'm pleased to share with you today that, looking at the classrooms on the second floor, they're colorful, they have shelves built in, the flooring is down, you know, excellent progress has been made. In the building, you have, again, all the technology wiring is in there. They're finishing up, you know, some of the main parts, and I'm very pleased and think that we will be able to open kindergarten on time, which I believe is September 18th. I know in talking at the executive team meeting today, the paving has been approved. That'll be coming in the next week or so. There's landscaping to be done, signs have been ordered. We actually even had an opportunity to talk to some of the neighbors that had watched the progress over these past months and are really pleased with what they're seeing. So I have great hopes that we will open on time in a beautiful school for our kindergarten children and our families. Mr. Minicello?
I couldn't agree more with Superintendent Smith that the building and the facility is going to be a very nice, cheerful, learning environment for the kindergarten children. Walking around with Superintendent Smith amongst construction is a very interesting experience, because I don't think in her own home Superintendent Smith does well around construction, you know? I think she likes the finished product. But you could see the upstairs is 95% complete. So as we were walking downstairs, I could see the little look on her face that, are we going to do this on time? Because the whole building was like part of the downstairs, so when she saw the upstairs, it was a much better feeling for her. But it's a great place. I think Liz Barry picked out the colors. It's really a great cheerful environment for these kids. And it's going to be a really special building, because it's going to be, you know, basically tailored for kindergarten, kindergarteners. The bathrooms are smaller than any I've ever seen in any elementary school in terms of the hardware. It's really tailored, custom tailored to them. And when the grounds are complete, it really is going to, I think, vitalize the neighborhood. The neighbors are going to be very happy with the transformation, I would suggest. In another week and a half, perhaps, if some of the school committee people have time to take a quick walk-through, you'd be very pleased with the progress. And I would, I'd like to commend the facility's subcommittee for putting in the work on that and making that recommendation to the committee as a whole, because it really was a good choice. It's going to be someplace that I think we're all going to be very pleased with. And the people working on the building are doing a great job as well, so.
I was very pleased to see our own craftsmen. That was the other part, knowing the hard work as we walked around. I will tell you that the new principal, Natalie Poehl, the teachers are anxious, and what she has done is she's taken pictures of some of the finished classrooms. You know, the furniture will be delivered probably in the next week or two, so she's allowed them online to actually, you know, see the school and see what might be as they start to plan for the year. Next, we have the Community School Advisory Board Five-Year Strategic Plan. Scott Holmes and Jean Meck, I believe, are going to present tonight. But I will tell you, having been in the possession of director of community schools, this project actually started about a year ago. And what the community schools is doing is looking into the future. And while we have a wonderful community school advisory board made up of parents from all of your school, at-large members, we're looking to position community schools in the future to actually have a five-year strategic plan and involve other parts of the community that can't necessarily make a commitment every month, but people that would support some of the initiatives as we look towards the future and growing in a different way. So welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, we were supposed to have the, we were supposed to have the PowerPoint presentation here. But in front of you, you do.
Go back.
You do have the pamphlet that we put together. We wanted to use that as a tool to be able to do this. And thank you, Superintendent Smith, for starting it off. I can always, I can always depend on you to kind of fill in the blanks. A lot of this started way back, history of community schools has been around for 14 years. We had the 40th anniversary a couple of years ago of both high school and community schools. At the time, it was a pilot program, very few in the United States. And as it became successful, directed by Harry Allen, it was really, it really took off. And Brockton was really a, Brockton was really a point person for community schools in the way it was brought across the United States. A lot of people came here to see how it was done and done well. It's been a gem of the school system. Back in the third century, or the century of 2000s, we had more money than we knew what to do with. And most of it came under the umbrella of community schools for that, all the after-school activities. We had six and seven thousand kids involved in after-school activities at one point. We had, when we had the money coming in, federal monies, 21st century, and the like. And those were fun days when we were sitting on community schools because you wanted to see, how do we spend all this money? And now things have changed dramatically, as we all know. Funding's dried up, resources dwindled, and you have to do more with less. I think we all find that in our own private lives as well as within the school system. The last two years, it hasn't been just a year, it's been two years that we've been meeting because community schools is made up of volunteers. The volunteers are representatives from each of the schools so that they come every weekly, monthly meetings, and they report back to their PTAs, PTOs, their parents groups. And they kind of disseminate the information about what community schools is all about. The umbrella for community schools is really, really large if you can, we get into it, there are about 40 programs that are underneath the umbrella of community schools. Last, every, the past five years, we have sat down at the end of the year, brought the parents together and said, what can we do better? What have we done well? What do we need to change? What programs need to be implemented? And from that, an awful lot of the programs that you see used now came from there. But also, the website, all of the activities that we've had now, including Summer Fest. By the way, I do sit on the Summer Fest committee with Bill McGauley. Bill has done incredible work as long as, as well as Jean Meck. One thing he didn't mention, or at least I didn't hear it, was the planetarium has been very, underutilized or not used at all. And we're going to have it open that day for shows, 20-minute shows, all the way through the course of the day. It is very, very exciting. The, to have that, I remember when I first came here, that planetarium was open, we had planetarium shows. What the committee's deciding to do, by the way, is to raise some money to be able to clean it and get it working again. So all students at Brockton High and the Young Yorkie Schools as well can come and have planetarium show. Very few high schools, I believe, have a planetarium. Our mission statement for this group, and it is aboard, is the same mission statement as community schools. Develop activities to meet all it needs to be. Plain, simple, direct. Why are we looking at per reward? Well, every year, volunteers change. There's no institutional memory, and it's very, very hard to keep people going. What this is a vehicle in order to raise money for the programs for the kids. Strictly outside funding. We're not talking bake sale dollars and car wash dollars. We're talking about hundreds of thousands and perhaps millions of dollars to be able to bring them into the school system so that kids can benefit, the students of Brockton and the citizens of Brockton, to be able to do it for programming. The guiding principles really are, promote public awareness, you have maximum use of the school facilities, develop programs, encourage parents and the community to become more involved, improve communication, and provide an annual progress report. Because we always know that any time you do anything, you truly need to be able to measure what you're doing. And that's what we're, that's what we are really trying to do. Kind of the basic work.
Gentlemen of the group, we have three subcommittees, the finance, the consulting, the mandatory, the oversight, the finances, also the fundraising and adowment campaign, a video to the networking, and the big money event planning, building thousands, seeking grants, donations, and organizing events that will bring in the big dollars for community schools. And strategic planning and sustainability functions will be to assist community schools in maintaining its current standards and continue, or to contribute, I'm sorry, its growth into the future.
Well, we, the guiding, the principle that we use, as with most committees, is just smart. You need to be very specific about what you need to accomplish. You have to be able to measure it. It has to be acceptable, in other words, to everybody participating. It's also, it has to be real realistic. We all have goals that we want to achieve, but we all have to be realistic about what we can do within a set timeframe so that we know how soon we have to accomplish it, whether it's one, two, five years, or six months. Extending the goals and capabilities, meaning, let's see how far we can go. We have a goal, let's see if we can go beyond that. And it should be rewarding for the system and for the participants. The board is going to be made up of...
Board of Directors, we have, we recognize 13 members, we've only listed nine, four members from the business community, two members from higher education institutions, two members from nonprofits, and one historian. Though only nine are listed, we decided 13 was a good number for a few different reasons. First of all, the number 13 was not too big, but not too small. Also, it allows space for other qualified individuals within the community who would like to join, to assist in coming through. And it also allows for three people per subcommittee to the end of the best means of accountability.
So are there any questions?
Mrs. Joyce?
You have nine listed up there, any idea where the other four members will come from?
Within, within the school system, within the committee, people who are interested in being a board. It's going to be a board like any board you've had, it's going to be a working board, in other words, you know, sit to sit, to meeting, it's more consistent than a subcommittee, as it does with the school board. That's where the work is done.
In the subcommittee. Same as at school committee.
Same here. And we're looking for people that have avenues to people with deep pockets.
So this will be in addition to the current board that you have, where people serve on year terms?
Correct. Only because, in order to do this kind of fundraising, you can't, you can't be just volunteers.
This is much more intense.
Who are sitting for an hour in a meeting and going back to their...
Yeah.
Their, their real goal is to get the information, be involved, and their main focus is their children, as it should be, within the school and, you know, what's going on in the school. This is for community schools to uphold and to provide true sustainability for it. Bill McGauley has been advocating for the last 10 years that we, in community schools, need to get alternative funding sources because he saw that far back, that things were going to dry up. Never did we anticipate that it was going to dry up, to the extent it has. Years ago, community schools had a program in every single, every single school. They had directors in every single school, there were programs in every single school. And it dried. My kids went through Kennedy School and went through all the programs and Brian Rogen, I think still to this day is welcome. And what we want to do is make sure that the financing is there for, to provide for the most number of children in the system.
Well, you know, whenever I read in the paper about a philanthropist that donates funds, and serious funds, to the Boston Public Schools, I'm always curious as to, gee, you know, they're a high-profile school system, so they will, they're attractive. And I, but I see this as a great vehicle to be able to attract some of those philanthropists to Brockton.
Well, yeah, you know, my association is, and this starts throughout, I mean, if you take the number, I mean, graduating classes, Brockton High School are, have been between 750 and 1,250 for how many years? Four years, just in this high school, you know, the older generation. And they've never been able to truly get off the ground with. I think this may be a vehicle to be able to raise some of those people across the country
Definitely.
Who have, you know, different networking and leading. And to be able to bring it in and be able to have everybody really enjoy kind of the fruits of those labors and provide a vehicle for them to do it.
Well, some of the people that are on this board of directors also serve on the existing board, do you see any overlap, or will this be a totally separate group of people?
Well, chairman, mostly it'll be different, but there'll be the chair of the community schools as well as the director.
Okay. That's great, well, this is really exciting, and I can't wait to hear how you progress in this new endeavor. Thank you for sharing it with us tonight.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
The next item is items to refer to subcommittee. I would ask if the superintendent has any, or?
Thank you very much. And thank you for everything that you do for our children and families. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Roger.
Bye, Pitt.
So the next item is items to refer to the subcommittee. I would ask if the superintendent or any members of the school committee have any items that they'd like referred to subcommittee. Mrs. Joyce?
One thing that we've kind of put on the back burner was the building naming policy. I'd like to bring that back to, as soon as possible, so we can get this, we had a couple of things that we were still hashing out on the ad hoc committee and things like that.
Through the chair?
Mr. Minicello, through the chair.
Yes, I need to meet with Mr. Thomas so that we can just tweak some of that language. So I'll, I'll put that on my to-do list. He's on vacation this week, so next week, I'll touch base with him, meet with him, tweak that, and then we'll kick it back to the committee for hopefully final review and approval.
That'd be great. With the start of school, I, you know, there's a couple of requests, and I'd like to just keep that momentum going for those. Thank you, that's all I had.
I don't have any other items to refer to subcommittee?
So, then, do you have any additional comments, or are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda, unfinished business, is the district capacity project, the parent survey. Kim?
Ms. Gibson? And for those of you, the district capacity project is something I became involved in last April when elected superintendent. It's a project that allows our school committee, Mr. Minicello has served, the superintendent, our school administrators, and our union, Kim Gibson, our president, they've worked diligently for quite a while, along with support. And what we're looking to do is the possibility of creating a Horace Mann Charter School, Innovation School for our district, where we can actually house a dual-language program for many of our students, provide language classes for our parents. So this is something that we have spent, I guess, just about a little over a half a year on, and we'll continue to move forward on it for this year.
We met earlier this evening just to review the parent survey component that we want to update you on. Our intention is to do the survey at all the open houses during the month of September. And we basically, the entire committee had the survey. We vetted it, we gave recommendations, we revised the survey. So we have the final one, we're looking for input, and just so we can keep you updated on what's going to happen. The survey has been translated into Spanish, Portuguese, and French, and will be available in all four languages, English included. You wanted to talk a little bit about the logistics of the survey itself, this is you on at the faculty, the BDA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We just wanted to let you know that we are planning on rolling out this survey to get community input to see if there is impact, interest in the community in creating a school like this. And we are planning on rolling it out at the open houses, which are happening at all the schools in September. So as Kim said, they will be available in all four languages, and we are planning on making it available both in paper form as well as an electronic version. So we're hoping to have some stations set up where we utilize the computer labs within the schools. And we're also hoping to get principals on board, some of the teachers help us facilitate, and also the community liaisons help us with that. Once we have the results of the survey, on our next meeting, we'll be able to review them, we'll be able to look at hopefully some Excel spreadsheets, look at some graphs, and see where the community interest lies. And then, once we have those results, we'll be able to come back and share that, we'll be able to share that information. And our next meeting is on August 20th, so at that time, we'll be able to kind of really work out the logistics of where the computers will be located and who will be manning the stations and things like that. That's it on the survey. If anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Donigan?
Thank you. Anything that the school committee can do to, to help get the word out about this survey as it continues to go on? Because I know sometimes acquiring feedback can be difficult. So obviously, this is something that you, we've all talked about over and over, it's exceedingly important to us. So if there's anything that we can do, please. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. This may be a little premature, but do you have an idea where the school is going to go? Or what building, or anything? I know it was premature, I'm just asking. I wonder if you had an idea? Nothing? Could I ask one more?
Sure.
On this, could you explain to the people at home what a Horace Mann school, a charter school is?
So a Horace Mann charter school?
In other words, it stops charter schools from coming in with, there's a Horace Mann in place?
Yeah, most likely one would try to, because what happens is you have a separate agreement from the actual BDA contract, would have a side letter agreement with things that would waive different contractual rights, basically. So you still, it's still under the public system, the school department still gets the money and still actually controls what goes on in the building. There's a board of directors there, but it's overseen by the school as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Do you have a target for how many surveys you'd like to collect?
We didn't go into depth with our conversation tonight, I mean, we'd love to get 100%, we're looking for all parents to fill out, you know, but we also, well, where some people may just take it and not return, that's why we want our computer stations there, but then we'll do that.
But in terms of like, in addition to our parents, you know, there's teachers, community members, I mean, do we have?
No, I'll be honest, the committee rarely has talked about the target number yet. And we didn't have the full committee tonight, so we didn't have a...
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
I did make note of that, so we can discuss it. But as you noticed on the first question, it actually doesn't involve more than just parents because we're asking if you're a staff member, if you're a community member, or a parent. So we really are looking to get everyone involved because, as you know, creating a school like this that would hopefully create very, very well-rounded people, I guess, for the community later on, so that they can...
Yeah, and we'd certainly like the survey results to be representative of the community in all facets of the community, so, just was wondering, thanks.
We have a schedule of meetings throughout this year, and actually, the number of meetings has increased for this year, and the commitment by the district to continue with this. So we will be back with pretty regular updates as we have an opportunity as a group to meet, you know, as a whole.
Thank you.
Mrs. Joyce? Mrs. Joyce?
Um, thank you. I, and thank you for the update, I appreciate it. I like the questions you're asking, and as I was going through it, um, the last three questions were that, it felt with the last three questions. When I got to the last one, I said, gee, I wish, I wish there was a way that I could, you know, um, I wanted to know if there were other languages, other than the, the ones you list here. And I didn't know that there was another question on the back, and that's an excellent question. Um, if there's, once you, once you're done, if, if there's a way that, that could go in front, I think it might be missed. I'm afraid it might be missed.
Is there a beginning piece there, will be actually in the survey? Oh, she got a handle for that, so it will end at the number one.
Good, yeah. Because that's a really great question at the end, because there may be some other languages that we're not really thinking about, that might, you know, we speak a lot of languages in the city, so it's great, but it's a great survey. Thank you.
Mr. Healy?
Uh, just to piggyback on what Mr. Donigan said, ladies, could you clarify until what, what's your target date for keeping this survey open till?
We want to do it through the open house days, so we haven't had, we don't have an end date, but we're assuming mid-October, because our next, you know, we have to, we haven't set our schedule yet.
Right.
We meet monthly, basically, so we want to be able to meet at our next meeting, after this closes, and have a good conversation about it, so...
Yeah, I, I think...
We'll have this end, we force of last week in September there.
Yeah, I think it would be incumbent upon the school committee and, uh, your team, for us to sit down and perhaps, um, go and push out these surveys the best way we can, as we meet our PACs and, uh, PTOs.
Anything that would be appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Minicello?
Uh, this is an example of Brockton Public Schools being proactive. Um, as many of you will recall, when we were presenting, uh, to the state against the opening of a charter school, this was one of the talking points that we talked about, in terms of, you know, what the community needs, what may be, what the Brockton Public Schools is doing. Um, we are, we recognize in Brockton that things change. Our population changes, our student body is changes, has changed, the needs of our students, and the desires of the community and the parents change, and, you know, we are willing to make quality change to meet, um, education benchmarks, and provide kids with, with a great experience here in Brockton. What Mike said is absolutely necessary, all of us should, at our PTA meetings, discuss the survey with our groups, to get a handle on what parents might be interested in doing. As a committee, we will be, obviously, as a committee with respect to the survey, um, we will be providing the information to our committee. I think the best place would be a curriculum subcommittee to discuss the results, and then discuss, you know, what the need is, what, what's being identified as the desire of the community. And then, following up on what Mr. Sullivan says, it'd have to be a dialogue in terms of whether, um, we have space available, where it could be, finances for next year, I mean, so there's a whole host of things that, once this committee does its due diligence, then together, with both committees, we come together and figure out what, you know, the appropriate plan moving forward would be, with respect to financing, with respect to logistics. So, we're, you know, we're, we're in the, we're a little more than in the infancy stage, um, but, um, you know, it's, it's been an interesting experience, but again, it, it just goes to show you that, um, we don't sit still in Brockton, and, you know, we, um, we meet the needs of the community, and we're going to do so in a responsible, um, calculated way that has an end game, where we actually can be successful. You can't bite off too much than you can chew, and whatever we decide as a committee, both committees, to do, you know, we've got to do it right, because that's what we do here in Brockton. We're not going to be haphazardly throw something together.
And our goal is always, you know, to increase our student achievement and their success. And as we were out there looking at similar programs, that's what we were seeing. So, that's the end, end goal for us, is to continually increase student achievement and success for our students.
Any other questions for Ms. Gibson or Mr. Falco? Saying none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, um, new business. Under new business, we have the election of the official voting delegate for the MASC annual business meeting. So, um, I don't know if anybody has a motion to, if somebody has expressed interest?
Traditionally, um, it's been the vice chair, and, um, we usually pick an alternate. I mean, if someone has a desire to be the delegate, by all means, I'd be happy to, um, to, to step aside. If people want me to do it, I'd be happy to do it, but we do need to pick a person for the delegate and an alternate. So, the first thing would be, who's going? Who's going to attend? So, someone that's not going to attend, obviously, isn't going to put their hat in the ring.
I'd make a motion to, um, ask to nominate our vice chairman for that.
For as a delegate, is there a second?
Second.
Motion being probably seconded, all in favor? Opposed, so moved. Now, would be the selection of the alternate?
Who's planning on, who else is planning on going, who would like to be the delegate?
I served as the alternate last year, and did a great job, so I, I just enjoyed the conference, but, uh, happy to serve in that role again.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to...
Motion?
Have Andy Robinson be the alternate delegate?
Is there a second?
Oh, second, yes.
Motion's been made, seconded to nominate Mr. Robinson to be the alternate. All in favor? Posed, so moved. Thank you. Um, Bill of Rights Essay Scholarship Contest, Mr. Donigan?
Yes, okay. Um, this is kind of an opportunity to, um, indirectly address some of the issues that were raised by the young gentleman who, who came up at the hearing of the visitors. Some of the issues that they raised are clearly of concern to all of us on the committee as well, and we, we have great concerns about how the park is going to work, and how it's going to affect student achievement. We also find ourselves often in positions where we're given the old cliche, unfunded state mandates and funded state mandates, but we're essentially told, this is what is going to happen. Find a way to make it happen. And it, it's frustrating for us. One of the things that I think all of us have, have identified as a way to sort of move the communication back upstream, is to, we've all, I think, reached out to our legislative delegation, um, and this is an example of Claire Cronin, who's our, our new state rep, in the eastern and Brockton areas, along with Michael Brady. She sends, continually sends, her office sends emails to us, they, they let us know what, what things are on the floor for, for consideration in the House, up on Beacon Hill. And I saw this come through on July twenty-second, and it's not the hugest thing in the world, but it is a, potentially, a very, a very wonderful opportunity. And I'll just simply read the letter, because it speaks for itself. Dear Mr. Donigan, pleased to announce the Sixteenth Annual Bill of Rights Essay Contest, sponsored by the National Foundation for Women Legislators, excuse me, legislators. Each year, the NFWL provides six female high school juniors or seniors an award, a three-thousand-dollar college scholarship, and an all-expense-paid trip to NFWL's annual conference. And then it goes on to say, I would like to invite your students from the classes of 2013 and 2014 to participate. Interested parties must fill out an application, write a short essay on one of two possible topics, and obtain a woman legislator to sponsor them. And Claire has extended her, um, her desire to act as sponsor to any students at our school. Now, the topics, without going too deeply into them, are simply, you know, significant issues in, in the news and in, in our world. One, of course, being national security, and the second are issues that arrive in the military, as women's roles are more prominent these days, in succeeding generations. Representative Cronin is somebody who has quickly become a, really a very, not, not only well-liked, but really someone seen as, she's seen as someone to be reckoned with on Beacon Hill. She's a strong, smart, female lawmaker, and I think that any of our kids who participated in this would, would really grow from it. I think that we, as a committee, have made some progress on, on one of the issues being charter, not charter schools, but what may evolve into a charter school, by working very closely with the state legislator, and I, and it's something that I know I want to continue to do, sort of push things back up, upstream, if they don't seem to make sense to us. But I don't want to digress too far from this. The, the issue here is, there is a time limit. I would suggest that you contact, um, I suppose you could contact me, but perhaps it would be best to contact the superintendent's office to get the details on this, because...
She's got an email address there, too.
Yes. Right. Well, you could, um, contact Claire, C-L-A-I-R-E dot Cronin, C-R-O-N-I-N, at M.A.S.
The retreat.
Or, excuse me, M.A.House.gov. Uh, or you could call her office at six one seven, seven two two, two one three oh. You could also contact the superintendent's office. For some reason, the, the date of September sixteenth or so, which is shortly after school begins, is the deadline to get these essays in, so I would suggest, um, any people out there in TV land that, that hear this, that you want to be ready to talk to your teachers about it, when you hit the ground on, on the, uh, the fourth of September, first day of school. But I'm sure that that's something that will be, uh, Dr. Walder, Walder will be, um, making sure, gets out to her class, classrooms on the first day of school as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donigan.
Thank you, Mr. Donigan.
Are there any other, um, items under new business, any committee members? I know, I know the superintendent wants to address something under new business, but, um, I'd like to give her the opportunity to go last, so if there's anything else, Mr. Minicello?
Um, I'd like to officially welcome Kathleen Smith as our superintendent of schools. We thank you, and we look forward to working with you. But, um, like the mayor said last week, I know John Jerome likes attention, but, um, everyone who knows John knows that's not true. But I'd like to sincerely thank John Jerome for his professionalism. It's been a pleasure working with John. He took over as superintendent under interesting circumstances. He has performed admirably. Again, he's the consummate professional, and he's truly, um, something that you don't see all that often, a true gentleman, in the way he carries himself, the way he treats other people. And, um, I just want to say, John, thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing what you did, and we appreciate it.
Anyone else's comments before I turn it over to the superintendent?
Two things I'd like to speak to. One is, and we'll have a, a full report for you, but you had the opportunity, I believe it was last June fourth, with the professors from Bridgewater State University, the vice president, our principal, June Saber, talking to you about the Footbridge Program this summer, that was a collaboration with our teachers in the Brockton Public Schools. Forty of our students went through a two-week program at Bridgewater State University. I had the opportunity to go to their graduation ceremony, uh, and it was very exciting to see what happened with professors from Bridgewater State University, working alongside our teachers in the area of math and science for our students. Our students got to have a real college experience. You can imagine, and I'm sure they'll tell you at length, the thing that they liked best about the college was the cafeteria and the food, you know, the ice cream, the desserts. Uh, they also had opportunities to go visit the airport in New Bedford. They went to a number of science museums, so it was a wonderful, wonderful collaboration, and I really look forward to you getting to hear the full picture, I'm sure, from Professor Lisa Battalini and, uh, excuse me, and Principal June Saber, going forward. And in closing tonight, I have to tell you, first of all, I also want to thank John Jerome for being a support to me, uh, the past number of months. I know he'll continue to be that support. But I will tell you, just this Friday, I got to move into the superintendent's office. And one of the first things I went to, and I really invite you to come, if you have an opportunity and haven't seen this, but in the superintendent's office is a big safe, because the, uh, central administration building used to be the post office in Brockton. And in this safe, going back to, I believe, nineteen nineteen, are these books, and this is all about history, this is all about you, this is about Brockton. So, this is a year's worth of all of your minutes, all of your hard work on the school committee, as I said, going back to nineteen nineteen. And the thing most interesting to me is, although the books are a little tattered in nineteen nineteen, the books all are the same. So, the first thing I did when I went into the office is, I'm a person about dates, I'm a person about history. I think this is, is important for the public, and it's certainly important when you actually put into place a superintendent who has been in the district for thirty-seven years. You know, your superintendent started out as a teacher, a teacher that worked in Title One Special Education, School Adjustment Counselor, and sitting before you tonight for the first time as your superintendent. So, I have to tell you, I was hired on the Friday of Labor Day weekend in nineteen seventy-seven, never was somebody more excited to, to get a job. My salary that year was ten thousand five hundred dollars, and I was thrilled to have that. I was able to go to that first September meeting, and this is where, again, history comes into play. I was hired, uh, as a Title One Math teacher, and I was hired with a group of ten people. A number of them were also Title One reading teachers. My supervisor at the time was Dr. John Kelly, and the supervisor of the reading teachers was John Jerome. As I look at these names, there are names of people that are still in your district, uh, you know, Patricia Hancock, that's Patricia Dupuy from our Raymond School. And also, Mayor Belzotti and I talked about this, Mary Belzotti and I were teachers together, Mary Valenti. So, this is a historical moment for me, I'm glad you indulged me in this, and I want you to know that, you know, we make history every time we sit here, and I thank all of you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, congratulations on your first meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Belzotti.
Um, if there is no further business, uh, it's a motion.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Close this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.